Welcome to the candidates debate for the Wakefield Town Council in the upcoming annual town election on Tuesday, April 27. I am David Watts Jr. Sitting in for Bill Carroll as the moderator for this debate. There are two seats open, each for a three-year term. Three candidates are looking for your vote. We have Ann P. Danahy, Brandon Flanagan, and Julie Smith Galvin. Posing questions to the candidates are Janet Schuchter, past Chair of the Democratic Town Committee, and former school committee member Anthony Guardia.
Thank you.
There are no opening statements in this evening's debate. There are no questions this year from Wakefield voters. We expect to be able to resume that feature in future debates. In turn, a question will be asked of a candidate by one of the panel. That candidate will have two minutes to respond to the question. Following that response, each remaining candidate will have one minute to also respond to the question. To allow for as many questions as possible in the time available while maintaining the ability for all to have a chance to speak, candidates should please keep their answers short and to the point. Questions have not been provided to the candidates in advance. Questions must be relevant to issues important to the town. Questions of a personal nature are not allowed. At the end of the debate, each candidate in turn will have the opportunity to present a two-minute closing statement. Strict compliance to the stated time limits will be observed in order to be able to have as many questions as possible from the panel. The moderator will govern the conduct of the debate at all times. Let us now begin the debate with a question by Janet Schuchter to Ann Danahy.
Thank you. Wakefield's positivity rate for COVID infection is increasing, and the town, I believe, is in the yellow zone right now. What should the town do about that? What are some lessons learned from the town's handling of the pandemic? And what is the role of Town Council in addressing this concern?
Thank you for that question. It's a really important issue, and I've been going to those bi-weekly COVID update meetings that I think are really informative in terms of giving us notification and guidance in terms of what we should be doing. At the last one, the rate is up to 4% in Wakefield, and they were very clear in terms of what we need to be doing. We need to be avoiding inside gatherings. We need to stay vigilant. And I think that the town, by keeping us updated, has done a very good job. I think also I know that the people from the Board of Health have been making calls to people who tested positive for COVID and doing checking calls to see how they're doing. And that's the function of town government, is to take care of its residents. And I think that they did a really good job on that. I think that they've been giving local businesses guidance. What I would like to see more of is maybe, I feel so badly for these businesses and restaurants that have lost so much in this time. And I think that it's been really been, keeping up with all the changes and regulations has been really difficult for them. So I'd like to see maybe the town providing maybe more resources for the local businesses, maybe even a sign that they can put on their doors. I do know that people have been having problems with people wearing their masks and refusing to wear their masks, and they've had to deal with that. So maybe even just having a form that they can put on their door about you cannot come in here unless you're wearing a mask, and what the rules are, what the seating is, because I've heard that people get angry. I think that that could have been helpful for the town. But it's a serious issue, and I think our town-
10 seconds.
-has done a great job. I know people who have had their vaccines. The town did a fantastic job in doing that, and I think continued involvement in keeping us informed.
Brandon Flanagan.
Yep, no, I'm here. I was muted. I apologize. David, thank you for the opportunity to be here, and to the panel, Anthony and Janet. That's a great question that was asked, and in terms of what we should be doing here at the local level, number one, we need to continue to follow state and federal guidelines and adhere to the governor's reopening policy and phased-in reopening approach that has affected the entirety of the Commonwealth, and of course, Wakefield is no different in that sense. Moreover, as a community, we need to not only remain vigilant but be cautious of the demographics of our community and those who may be especially susceptible to contracting COVID and being mostly impacted by it. At the end of the day, I'm a firm believer in individual responsibility, and in that sense, we need to ensure that as a community, we're doing the right things to ensure safety and to follow the protocols. Moreover, it's incredibly important-
10 seconds.
...that we continue to vaccinate, that we continue to vaccinate our teachers in particular so that we can help them to get back into the schools and to reopen our schools safely while being cognizant of both social, emotional well-being of not only the children who are returning back to school but also of the staff.
Julie.
Thank you, David, and thank you to WCAT, Janet, and Anthony for having us today. I absolutely agree with my counterparts here that remaining vigilant is the number-one priority. We cannot let down our guard, which really means modeling good behavior. We need to be leaders and make sure that we do not go out and hold functions as community leaders, as neighbors. That is absolutely critical. You asked what the role of Town Council is, and I think that that's an important question. Town Council declared a state of emergency very early so that we were able to get resources from the federal government. We gave out 10,000 masks. We have run vaccine clinics. We have set up grant programs for businesses so they can move some of their business online. We have allowed outdoor dining, and we are in the process of putting together some public parklets-
10 seconds.
...so that people can get out and be in a safe environment, not be together. So absolutely stay vigilant, please. Get tested, get vaccinated. Thank you.
Anthony, a question for Brandon Flanagan, please.
Thank you, and thank you again for being here tonight. Currently, there are many developments going on throughout Wakefield, including on Crescent Street, Foundry Street, and the Head of the Lake, to just name a few. Do you believe that Wakefield is being overdeveloped? If so, what is the role of Town Council in this? And would you be willing to share some of your thoughts on some of those projects?
Sure. Anthony, that's an absolutely fantastic question and a very important question. First, I'd like to say that we cannot have a sustainable and successful community without good planning based on long-term vision and coordinated implementation. We recognize the ZBA has a great deal of authority in this town, but ultimately, the buck stops the Town Council. And as elected leaders in this community, we need to remain accountable to those who elect us. I'm concerned with the projects which have begun to change, I would say, in some cases, the character and the overall landscape of our community, in particular, the project that's being proposed at the Head of the Lake. I often question why this community hasn't elected to designate the lake and the immediate areas surrounding the lake as a green space. You know, I think that that would well preserve our main attraction to our community, which is the lake, and soon enough, unfortunately, because we haven't been able to take action appropriately and accordingly and without enough due course, that those of us who will be looking across the lake will soon be looking at massive housing structures. Although certainly, when and if elected to Town Council, I will always review each plan on an individual basis, but I'm concerned that with the overdevelopment, that we're going to put a massive strain on our school system. You know, our classrooms now are either at capacity or near capacity, and we know that the more folks you bring into this town, we may put a very significant strain on those classrooms here in our community. That includes our teachers. You know, what does that do to our roadways, which are already deteriorating and clearly need to be addressed now? And look no further than Main Street. In addition, anytime that you're increasing the population with up to what could be 500 units or more across the lake, there's a higher propensity for increase in crime, and that's something that we need to be very, very cognizant of here in our community. Because soon enough, if we don't take-
10 seconds.
...we may be soon living in the city of Wakefield and no longer the town or the community of Wakefield, which will therefore entirely change the overall makeup of our community.
Thank you. Julie.
Thank you. The way the question is phrased is interesting, and I would push back a little bit and say that the word "overdevelopment" is a loaded word. It is not a black-and-white issue by any means. We still have very important needs for housing in this town to be able to accommodate young families or young professionals that want to come in, all the way up to people that want to age in place and stay here for the long term. And so I think we do need to look at some long-term planning. We need to be engaged citizens in the zoning, the ZBA process. If there is a need for rezoning areas, then we need to be very engaged in those. But I would really push back and say that when you think about development, we need to be smart. We need to do it near public transportation. We need to do it for all levels of income and different people who want to-
10 seconds.
...and stay here. So that's how I would approach development, and again, I push back that it's overdevelopment. I think it's smart development.
Ann.
Ann, you're muted.
I think that we need to really think about a smart growth strategy. I am concerned when I see some of the structures that are going up, particularly the height of some of the structures. I wonder, you know, why they're going up that high. I'm concerned about the project at the lake. The lake is one of my most cherished places. It's the reason that I moved to Wakefield when I first didn't know Wakefield. I came and I saw the lake, so I always want to protect the lake. I'm concerned about development in terms of the stress that it's going to put on our schools. When I was on school committee, I was really proud that we were able to maintain low class-size policy every year. I'm not sure that we will be able to maintain that, because I think that these units will have children in them. I think also when you add more units and more housing, you need to make sure that you have more open space and more green space-
10 seconds.
...and recreational opportunities. I'd like us to see us pursue the Community Preservation Act, which is a state program that provides parks and open space, affordable housing, and supports community preservation through the plan, and I'd like us to pursue that.
Janet, a question for Julie Smith Galvin, please.
Thank you. Currently, we are dealing with a street closure of Broadway due to the work being done at the railroad crossing. It's a complicated issue. The crossing is closed because we currently are grandfathered into a quiet zone using more lenient federal guidelines. If we open immediately, we would lose that quiet zone status and have to adhere to more modern, stricter federal guidelines to be into a quiet zone. What do you think should be done, and how can we assist the business owners and reduce traffic?
Janet, it is definitely an unfortunate situation. In terms of what we should be doing is we should be putting all the pressure we can on the Federal Railway Agency that is, I hear, very close to making a decision. I think we need to wait for that, because I think as inconvenient and discouraging as the closure of Broadway is, it would be a far more impactful, long-term problem to open and subject not just the Broadway crossing to sirens every time a train comes through, but every single crossing. So there's three crossings at least in Wakefield, and they would all be subject if we lose that grandfathering. And so I think you need to be patient, and we need to be patient while being assertive with the railroad agency that needs to sign off on this, and I know we are doing that. In terms of helping the businesses, we need to be doing all we can as a government and as individuals to go over and frequent those businesses, particularly in the plaza there where Early Harvest is and a number of businesses and Mike's Gym as well. We have signage there. The town, I know, is encouraging people to go there. I believe we are allowing people to come out of there and take a left so that it's easier access in and out. So I think as with any large projects, there are issues that come up like this. Super unfortunate. We need to be able to communicate about them, anticipate them if we can, and when we get into a situation like this, we have to pull together and help those who are impacted. And it's not just the businesses, by the way. There's a lot of residents around there that are impacted and are more than inconvenienced. It's really impacting their lives-
10 seconds.
...and so, yes, so we need to work with them and get through this and get that sign so that we can open it.
Ann.
Yes, so it is an unfortunate situation. I am not privy to what is going on in terms of the discussions, but I see it as that we have two options. One is that we lose that quiet zone, and I don't think that any of us want to lose that quiet zone that impacts so many people in our community. At the same time, from what I understand, it's the railroad authority that's holding things up. If we pull out and not do the safety requirements, that puts us at risk for safety, which is a big concern. All I can say is that I think that we do need to make sure that we're supporting the businesses, that we're doing, maybe talking to the businesses and finding out what are their needs and what could we do for them to encourage, to minimize that issue-
10 seconds.
...and hopefully it'll be resolved. Hopefully, it'll be resolved soon, but I think ongoing communication is really essential and keep that conversation and pressure on.
Thank you. Brandon.
Yeah, no, first of all, thanks for asking the question. First of all, for the folks listening at home tonight, leadership, advocacy, and accountability. And I have to say that Counselor Smith Galvin, I strongly disagree with you, because I'm going to say this. I hope that she's willing to tell the business owners over there on Broadway to continue to wait, because as far as I'm concerned, it's absolutely unacceptable. I've spoken to those business owners over there, and they're hurting. They've been impacted significantly by this road closure, and it's not fair to them. We need to be accountable, and we need to advocate, accountable to the folks who elect us, and advocate for those in our community. We are just coming off one of the worst economic slides in recent history. We just came out of a pandemic that we haven't seen over 100 years or close to 100 years, and yet we're still telling the folks who are just hanging on by a thread to continue to wait.
10 seconds.
...answer, and we need to be advocates for those in our community. We need to lead from the front, and we need to continue to be accountable to those who elect us.
Thank you. Anthony Guardia, question for Ann Danahy, please.
No, thank you. So currently, the town is in between multiple studies, including one from the Urban Land Institute and an additional one with the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. The town has had a variety of plans in the past, including turning Albion Streets into an arts quarter, as well as other revitalization plans. How do you think these plans currently will work out? And what would you do as a Town Council to ensure that the plans that are being made now are actually implemented?
Yeah, I think that a lot of the work that's going on is very exciting. I think the hiring of Erin Klindaas, the Economic Development Director, was a very good move, but at the same time, I think that things need, there needs to be more of a strategy rather than just, here's what we're doing for downtown, here's what we're doing on housing and development, is that we need to have a better strategy in place, one that coordinates helping us with housing and fulfilling the needs of housing. I think that we need to look at senior housing for people who are over the age of 55. I think that we also need to coordinate how does all the development that's going on fit into the downtown development. And I think that we also need to be looking at businesses, business development outside of the downtown area as well. It's like, let's look at bringing big businesses in. Bringing big businesses in is a way to minimize residential tax rates. We can provide businesses, attract businesses, maybe by providing short-term tax incentives to get them here if they commit to being here for an extended period of time. Businesses pay double the rate, the tax rate. So we have a lot of issues facing us, and a lot of, we're talking about building a new high school. At the same time, people are tired of having tax increases, so this could be a good way, but it all has to be coordinated together, and we need to have action and move on that. So I think we're headed in the right, right direction, but I do think we have work to do, and I think we need a smart growth strategy that incorporates open space, historic preservation-
10 seconds.
...and affordable housing. So I would pursue looking into opportunities through the state such as the Community Preservation Act.
Thank you. Brandon.
Sure, so Ms. Danahy had an interesting response in terms of affordable housing and other units, but my concern has been and continues to be the following: our downtown. When are we going to take care of our downtown? My wife and I grew up in town. I went away for college. We got married, and we lived in another community for a few short years, and we came back to Wakefield in Restaurant Molees and Florsheim Shoes, where they once were, are now relegated to just an empty past, as it seems. I'm concerned that we don't have the foresight or the vision right now to implement and execute on a strategy that's going to not only motivate the property owners to lease out those buildings, but moreover, to attract small businesses to set up shop in Wakefield. If we're able to bring those businesses into our community, we can drive local commerce, we can increase local spending, we can supplement the current income stream for the town's perspective-
10 seconds.
...to work off of the local tax rate and hopefully stop being so reliant upon the real estate taxes that are rather crushing to a lot of residents in this community. So we need to revitalize our downtown foremost and get those folks to want to be in Wakefield, which will drive the local economy and will certainly supplement our revenue stream much more significantly.
Julie.
Oh, I think she's frozen.
All right. Let's see if Julie will come back.
I don't know what happened.
All right, let her go ahead and speak.
We're still on the MIPC question, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, thank you, and sorry about that. I don't know what happened. Anthony, as you say, sometimes we can be studied to death, and there are a lot of plans.
Well, we lost her again. All right, let's see if we can get Julie back. We'll move on to the next question, just to save time. Janet, a question for Brandon Flanagan, please.
Thank you. Why don't we have a conversation about civic discourse? As a nation, our country is experiencing significant differences. In Wakefield, we've had to navigate differences in opinion, sometimes not as respectfully as we would hope. For example, Wellesley has launched a civil discourse initiative to help give residents a way to come together and talk about important issues. Do you have any thoughts about how to improve communication in Wakefield?
Janet, that's a very unique and very interesting question. With respect to civic discourse, I wrote an article that was submitted to the Daily Item, I think it was about a week ago, and I asked and called on my other opponents here tonight for unity. The warrior logo issue created a huge divide in our community. I was very disappointed with how many folks conducted themselves, and in that same letter, I had specifically referenced how we're not doing a good job of setting the example for the next generation. Facebook, the internet, websites, and other mediums to harass or cyberbully individuals is entirely unacceptable. Now, I always will and continue to be a big believer in disagreement, and I think that's entirely fine, and at the end of the day, it breeds innovation and spawns new ideas. But at the end of the day, in terms of being a leader for our community and being on the Town Council, it means that we lead from the front, that we set the example for others to follow. And what does that mean? Well, it means being transparent. It means effectively communicating with our residents, and I think that we haven't done as good of a job communicating with the residents of our community as we should be doing. And although it's not a Town Council issue, I'll point to one issue in particular, and I think it was the vote that the school committee had taken on the logo. Now, look, I understand that that's a school committee vote, and that's something that the school committee needs to opine on. However, it's still a ballot question on the 27th of April, and it's incredibly important that the decisions that will impact or affect our community, that we're encouraging those from our community to be heard. We want their voices to be heard. We want to encourage their participation so that they remain involved and feel vested in our community, and especially for any of those decisions that impact them financially, economically, emotionally, or otherwise. So I think that we need to do a very good job of being transparent and continuing to communicate with those-
2 seconds.
...more effectively.
Thank you. Let's go back quickly. Anthony, can you summarize your question to Julie, the last round, please?
So Julie, do you remember the question about the Urban Land Institute and the Metropolitan? All right, you're nodding yes, so-
Okay, one minute, Julie.
All right. So as I was saying, the MIPC study is actually a facilitation of a visioning, which I think is absolutely critical to Wakefield. So that is not just a third party coming in and doing a study. That is engagement with the community on very specific issues to really set forth the vision that touches upon everything that we have been talking about. The Urban Land Institute is a voluntary review of private property, and so I do think that that is some interesting ideas that they have given us, but that will have to be taken up by the business community on that particular block. And so, just in short, we can be studied to death. There is no doubt there are many, many studies that have been done and put on the shelf. However, I think that they are important to getting feedback, and then we will take them, and we're already implementing them. In terms of the downtown revitalization, it's certainly moving forward. The Albion Street Quarter is under construction right now, and so we are seeing progress, not just studies.
Thank you. And Janet, could you reiterate your question to Julie that we're currently on?
Sure. So have a conversation about civic discourse. As a nation, our country is experiencing significant differences. In Wakefield, we've had to navigate differences in opinions, sometimes not as respectfully as we would hope. For example, Wellesley has launched a civil discourse initiative to help give residents a way to come together and talk about important issues. What are your thoughts about how to improve communication in the town?
Thank you. It is definitely a troublesome issue and has been just amplified through this logo, these logo disputes and the vitriol that we have seen with that. I think that we first need to get away from our keyboards, come out from beyond the keyboards and talk to each other. I realize that we are in COVID, but simply throwing out calls for unity or, you know, throwing names at each other is absolutely not how we are going to do it. We may need a facilitated, I like what Wellesley's done. There are a lot of models around uncommon dialogue where people come together, but really, I think we need to get back together, because this division, this animosity is going to impact every single thing that we do in this town. We're not going to be able to move forward on the little things, on coming together and talking about construction and development, and little and big things, absolutely. So we absolutely need to do it, and if we need a facilitated way to do it, that's the way to do it.
Thank you. Ann, your response to that question?
Thank you. This is an issue that bothers me, and I think it's one of the greatest issues facing this community. What I saw in terms of this whole logo, it was embarrassing. It was embarrassing. I listened to the panel, and I listened to somebody comparing Native Americans to animals, saying, you know, why don't we ask the Huskies their mascots? I think that we need to respect each other. Whatever your position is, you can be respectful for it. I agree with Brandon. We do need, disagreement is not bad, but it's how we do it. We need to show respect, and this town is so divided. We are so polarized, and it's the people who have been here for generations, they're feeling unwelcome.
10 seconds.
And it's the people who have just moved here, and they're feeling unwelcome. And it is a shame, because you know what? We probably have more in common than we have apart, and we need to come together. It's the most important issue to me.
Mr. Moderator, can we reply back to this?
No, we're only one reply per question. We're moving on to the next question. Anthony Guardia, a question for Julie Smith Galvin, please.
Thank you. There's been a few examples, and we asked this in the last question, a few examples towards real estate taxes and lowering it. However, we are looking at the potential of building a brand-new high school. As a candidate for Town Council, would you support either an override, a debt exclusion, or another tax increase for a new high school? And if not, how would you recommend we build a high school?
It is something that we're going to have to grapple with, because the truth is that we absolutely need a new high school or some major renovation to the high school. We owe it to our students- We owe it to our students. We owe it to our town. We saw the excellent results that building the Galvin brought. I mean, before the Galvin was built, there were many people in town, including myself, that were wondering whether this was a place that we would really put down roots for a long time. And we've lived, my kids were going into it and, and my son went there for the first year before it was renovated. And now students go through there and it is beautiful. People move here because of it. I have colleagues who go through Wakefield on the train and say, that's such a great, just such a great, um, school in your town. And so we do need a high school, which means we're going to have to make some hard decisions about how to pay for it. Most likely that is going to be a debt exclusion. We already have a debt exclusion on the Galvin Middle School that goes for another 20 years. And so we need to understand what that will look like, what we can get. We need to be able to make sure that people who on fixed incomes have other opportunities or other ways, like our senior tax relief or the circuit breaker that the state, um, provides. But we need, we're, we're going to need an override. I believe we're going to need an override. I don't know how you build a high school and put the kind of resources into a high school without an override. But we can't do it without thinking about people on all spectrums of income and how we are going to make it less painful for some and, um, and those who are willing and able to pay do so. I was talking with a constituent yesterday. Um, and certainly this is only for parents who have students in schools, but they said, you know, honestly, an, an override, the cost of an override, we don't know what it would be, probably within the range of a couple hundred dollars per year, which is not insignificant. I understand. But that is far less than sending students to, to public schools and losing kind of the pride of our Wakefield schools.
Thank you. Anne?
Yes, I think that investing in education, I think education is the great equalizer. I think that we need to make sure that we provide our students with an environment that provides them with 21st century learning opportunities. At the same time, we talk about COVID fatigue. I think people have tax fatigue too. Our real estate taxes, um, people are feeling really pinched, especially as we come out of this pandemic. So I think that it requires creative problem solving. We need a new high school and we want to minimize taxes. So how do we do that? Let's look at opportunities. We have great property along 128. Let's look about bringing in companies, big companies that will pay, that will offset our residential tax and also build our tax base so that, um, we can enjoy a new high school that our students deserve.
Ten seconds.
My children were not fortunate. My children went through the school system. They went through the old Galvin and the old high school and it was really unfortunate. I wish they had that opportunity.
Thank you. Brandon?
Sure. Well, you know, as it stands today, I, I, I walk the same hallways as my father and my mother. And currently my eight-year-old seems doomed or destined to do the same thing. And I find that entirely unacceptable. I ask again, where's the leadership? What is the plan? I ask the folks, our county officials, what is the plan? We've submitted the same proposal to the state four times and we were denied three times in a row. We haven't made the adequate changes in order to get any type of support from the state in order to get behind our plan. We don't have a movement in our community to, to galvanize, to use a term that was used a couple of years ago to support the Galvin Middle School, to get folks behind this. Uh, you know, at, at the end of the day, whether it's an override, a tax increase or debt exclusion, we're all, they all increase your taxes. We're still in a pandemic, folks, right? And I know that people are hurting. Economy is not doing as well as it should be and people are watching. Increasing the taxes now isn't necessarily the best idea, but what is a good idea is getting the community behind this concept, getting behind a new high school, seeking state and federal grant support and assistance to supplement what we're doing here in our community.
Thank you. Janet Schuchter, a question for Anne Danahue, please.
Thank you. What are some successes and missteps of the town in the past year or two?
I think some successes is the, the handling of COVID. I think that COVID was handled in, um, very well about initially getting everybody masks. So masks could not be found. I think the vaccination clinic has been very successful. I think the communication, um, around COVID and the COVID response. Uh, I think that we have a triple A bond rating, that the, the town is incredibly well-run. It's, um, when I was on the finance committee, it was the darkest days of Wakefield, 2006 to 2011. Every budget was cut for five years. But we came out of it because of leadership. And we have a triple A bond rating. We have free cash that, you know, we have for the, for our rainy day fund. So that is really a great success. What are some things that we need to work on? I think we need to have a smarter growth strategy. I think that we need to plan. I think that we need a lot more in terms of long-term visioning that combines housing, downtown development, overall economic development and preserving open space and making sure that we're taking care of, we're taking, that we're providing recreational facilities, that we're providing fields for students. I remember when my children were younger, field space was so difficult. And you know what? Nobody wants their children practicing soccer at nine o'clock at night on a school night, but if that's the only time that you can get field space. So, and I think that we just really need to work on our infrastructure. We need to make sure that we have a continuous maintenance plan for our roads and our sidewalks that is, that is planned and communicated with people about here is our plan of where we're going to be, maintaining those roads so that people can plan their routes accordingly. I think the government, um, can work for us, but I think that it needs to be smart. And I think we're headed in the right direction. The envisioned 2030 is exciting and I'm looking forward to seeing where that goes.
Thank you. Brandon?
Sure. Uh, another great question. Thank you for asking. You know, um, one of the successes surely i- is, uh, is our, is, is, well, let me say this. I give the town manager, Steve Mayo, great credit for continuing to operate Wakefield in the block. Certainly no easy feat. But my question is, what good is it do if the money is just sitting in the bank? We need to reinvest in our community and that starts with accelerating infrastructure repairs across our community. I've said it once, I think I've said it twice, I'll say it for the third time. Our roads are in tough shape and the project with National Grid isn't helping matters any. And I still remain concerned about that because my understanding is that they should be repaving the roads, not patching them. I know folks around town who have blown out their tires and ruined their cars, including the front ends because of how bad the roads are. Look no further than Main Street and certainly don't have to look much further than Pleasant Street.
Ten seconds.
So I think it's time that Wakefield begins to reinvest in our community and begin proper preparations and planning for the future that will not only accelerate growth, but create a sustainable model moving forward.
Thank you. Julie?
Thank you. Um, I will start with the, um, I always have a rule when people talk to me. You complain about things, but you have to say something good too. So there's a lot of great things going on in Wakefield that has already been mentioned. Certainly the COVID response has monopolized everybody's time. And I am really, really proud of our public health department. Um, I am proud of some of the collaborations that we have with local towns where we share resources, like with the public health department in Melrose and the accessory with Redding. So those are really important things as well. In terms of missteps, I, I think, you know, one recently came to light where the voting program on the lake, hadn't, not been compensated for that. Um, it was started as kind of a community pilot and, and was ongoing. And so we are remedying that. Um, I think there's more that we could do. We talk a lot about equality. And we haven't done, um, we haven't, really haven't put the hard work and resources into that. So, you know, there's no, there's no shortage of things that we can do, but lots of things that we're doing well.
Thank you, everyone. Uh, we will start two-minute closing statements with Anne Danahue, please.
Thank you, WCAT. And, um, thank you. It was nice to be with my fellow, fellow candidates who are running. And, um, one thing I think that we all have in common is that we don't like the discourse in town and the, and what's going on. And I, um, I stand with, I stand with Brandon's request about, you know, create, conducting a positive campaign. I think that's really essential. If we want to change this community and bring this community together and we're all wanting to be leaders, then we need to show that. And I will stand with, I will stand with you on that. So having good ideas is wonderful, but think, getting things done is what really matters. So if you look at my track record, both serving on elected and appointed boards in Wakefield, there's no doubt that I've gotten things done. So serving on town board requires more than just good ideas. It requires somebody who has the experience, knowledge and leadership to get things done. Collaborating and finding common ground with your colleagues is essential in accomplishing great things. It's not that we always need to agree, but we do need to have respect for each other. We need to listen, not only to the residents in town, but also to each other. That's how I've always led and how I will continue to lead. My time on the finance committee from 2006 to 2011 was perhaps the bleakest time in Wakefield's history. All town budgets face cuts every year. My time on the finance committee prepared me to make tough but thoughtful decisions. Now, thanks to thoughtful planning, Wakefield enjoys a triple A bond rating. I look back at my six years on the school committee, one as vice chair and one as chair with great pride. During my tenure, our school saw incredible progress. Highlights include opening the Doyle preschool, collaborating with the town to create a new high school football field. And we made the new Galvin Middle School, including all of its new fields, a reality. And we invested in the social and emotional needs of our students long before it was a buzzword. We committed to a low class size policy, supporting both teachers and students. And we ushered in free full-day kindergarten. And we provided a town-wide fund to support special education students. So Bill Jackson said, the strength of a team is each individual member and the strength of each member is the team. So I think it's important that we all work together, regardless of who is on town council.
Thank you. Brandon Flanagan?
Sure. Well, thank you to our moderator and, uh, and our panel, both Janet and Anthony for the questions. David, thank you. Uh, I'd also like to thank the candidates for participating with me this evening. Uh, I enjoyed the opportunity very much. As I see it, the role of town council should be to facilitate and work with the community, to develop a sense of place through both branding and promoting, while also enhancing local identity and protecting social cohesion, the health and general overall wellbeing of our community and its residents. In that role, I will bring strategic thinking, innovation and decisive action to the town council. I will establish open and effective communication protocols supported by both commitment and my passion for this community. Drawing on my background of both public service at the Commonwealth, advocacy for legislative change against child predators and my leadership qualities as a chief executive officer, I will bring a business-like mindset to the town council in order to move our community of Wakefield forward together and in unity. I intend to accelerate infrastructure repairs, including our deteriorating roadways and sidewalks. I will lead the charge when it comes to reinvesting our community by building new schools, revitalizing our downtown, creating incentives for small businesses to set up shop in Wakefield and to create a thriving and sustainable local economy. I will carefully evaluate every proposed building and construction site, carefully ensuring we don't overdevelop our small town while we continue to preserve the natural landscapes of Wakefield's lake and the surrounding scenery. In fact, as a member of town council, I will propose that we designate the lake and its surrounding area as a green space. In doing so, we will in fact preserve its legacy and its beauty for not only this generation, but more importantly, for future generations. On day one, I'm prepared to sit down with our town public safety leadership. Because I want to combat the opioid crisis in our community. No family should experience the pain and despair and mourning the loss of a loved one due to this horrific epidemic. It's time to take action and to fight back because I implore every one of you folks listening today to find a family who hasn't been either directly or indirectly impacted by this. I want to be the voice of every resident while serving this council objectively with integrity. I have the energy and the enthusiasm to do it and I humbly ask for your vote on April 27th. It would be an absolute honor to represent all of Wakefield. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Julie Smith Galvin?
Thank you. And thank you again to everyone. So in 2018, I was honored to be selected by my fellow Wakefield residents, by you, to serve our town. And for the past three years, that's exactly what I have done. I've committed to representing all members of our community. I've consistently listened to differing opinions. I've thoroughly researched issues and I have cast over 875 votes that reflect my sincere belief that our town can be more livable, inclusive and sustainable. My family has benefited from Wakefield's incredible cultural, athletic and educational opportunities. We love Wakefield's recreational areas, its tight-knit communities, easy access to Boston and the vibrant small business community in the downtown as well as in Greenwood and other neighborhoods. In my current role as vice chair of the town council, I have realized more fully that Wakefield's strengths are not accidental nor coincidental. Rather, they are the direct hard work, the, their direct result of hard work, difficult decisions, occasional sacrifices, a guiding vision and compassion for others. Under the town charter, the town council is Wakefield's chief executive office and chief policymaking agency. This is really important for voters to remember. Your responsibility as voters is to decide who you want to fulfill this important role. Specifically, what skills, what values, what experiences and what vision you want in a town counselor. I will continue to bring my experience as a mom, as a longtime community volunteer, as well as three decades as a communications executive, an environmental leader and a business owner. I will bring my belief that government has an important role in ensuring that we protect and respect our people and our planet. And I will bring my vision that Wakefield is a place where residents, businesses and visitors are welcome and can thrive. I humbly ask for your vote on April 27th. It would be my honor to continue to serve Wakefield and build a stronger future for all of us.
And with that, we have come to the end of the debate for the two town council seats. Thank you to the candidates for their participation this evening. Anne P. Danahue, Brandon Flanagan and Julie Smith Galvin. Our thanks and appreciation also go to the debate questioners Janet Schuchter and Anthony Guardia.
And I, I just wanted to, uh, thank all our friends here at WCAT for this debate and the previous one and for all the work they've done during the pandemic. As somebody who works with a lot of parents, I know for a fact that they've been very, very appreciative of all the work you've done filming all the school events and all the government events and events like this. So we appreciate it. Um, under your leadership of Executive Director Ryan Boyd, uh, who I happen to share a birthday with. We were both born on September 27th, 1985. So, um, thank you very much to WCAT.
And now it is up to you, the voters. Exercise your right to decide who will govern town affairs by voting on Tuesday, April 27th. Finally, join us on Saturday, May 8th at 8:00 AM for annual town meeting at the Wakefield Memorial High School Field House. Alternative seating will be available under a tent in the adjoining parking area. Thank you for joining us this evening. Good night.